Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board meeting of September 23rd, 2025. We're in the Carver Town Hall Meeting Room Number One. These proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcasted by Area 58 TV. If we could all please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a few matters of public hearings, and the first is to consider the proposed amendments to the Carver zoning bylaw and zoning map to establish a new article, 4-13 MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. The proposed multi-family overlay district is intended to comply with the requirements of General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 3A, commonly known as the MBTA Communities Law. Ms. DeBott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our consultant is attending two meetings tonight because that's the time of season. So she is expected to be with us. We've been texting back and forth about her schedule this evening, so she'll be ready on the big screen as soon as I hear from her. And I'll be monitoring that to see if she shows up so I can...
All right.
So if I may, as previously discussed, the board considered a number of different sites and settled on 30 to 32 West Street. So this is the current zoning map for the area that shows the district. The zoning itself was developed by Barrett Planning. It has been forwarded to Town Council. You folks have had earlier versions of the bylaw in your hands, so you can take a look and see what the parameters are. As I said before, you know, there's very little new under the sun at this point as a transit-adjacent community. A lot of other places have already gone through this process, so there's been a lot of interaction with various versions of zoning bylaws with the Attorney General and with EOHLC, formerly DHCD. We will be forwarding this on to them as well, to EOLHC, after we've had the hearing to see if there's any other changes the board is looking at, to confirm with them. Town Council has reviewed it and weighed in and made a couple of suggestions as well.
Okay.
I think likely the version that I had sent you previously was a marked-up version. So what's on the screen here and what's on our website now is that clean version of the bylaw.
Okay.
So essentially, the application requires, the zoning bylaw requires, the town to develop zoning for multifamily housing on the site that the board has decided, 30 to 32 West Street. And so this is the Diventi and Development Regulations bylaw. It is consistent, for the most part, with Carver's current zoning, so minimum lot size is 60,000 square foot. You see, the stories, heights in stories is three feet, maximum height of 45 feet. Because in the conversations that Judy had with you folks, I think, prior to looking at developing the bylaw, we didn't want four-story, five-story buildings.
Correct.
In the site that we have, we have sufficient amount of acreage in order for, to accommodate that. I did ask about this particular number because we had talked about before how the bylaw is 15 dwelling units per acre, but this chart says 16. So when Judy and I talked about this, she said that was the direction that she received from EOHLC, that the zoning should be at least 16 on your chart. She didn't have a real good explanation for it, other than EOHLC said, you know, if it's 15 units, we're likely to kick it back because of the imperfections of the modeling software that they have. So our obligation is to create 235 units on the site. And so the zoning is written this way with her previous experience with EOHLC. She said if the board wants to make it 15 dwelling units per acre, they're more than fine to. Just be aware that it could be kicked back by EOHLC. There is an affordable housing component to this. 10% of the units will be affordable within the development. It also has some language in here about segmenting developments. Sometimes folks try to game the system by segmenting a development so they don't hit that threshold. The requirements of the development say segmentation means, you know, sort of trying to parse this in and out with less lots, but they basically said that the dwelling units above the existing number over 36 months earlier can, on a contiguous parcel. So in my mind, that reads that they're going to look back to see, you know, what happened over that 36 months. Did you get, excuse me, did you get to that point where you're trying to segment the system? And typically, when we see these things, there's also a schedule for doing the affordables in tandem with the market rate units. So all the inclusionary units will be located within the development. There's nothing off-site. All those inclusionary units, all those affordable units will have to be eligible for the subsidized housing inventory, where we keep track of those sort of things. Well, this is a bit technical, but we, as the town, would be, the developer would submit that information to us, and we would submit that information to EOHLC on how those affordable units happen because it's under a local action unit program. Like I said, it's a bit technical, but the developer is required to provide those units in the process for providing them as they provide us the information. We put the application together and send it to EOHLC to confirm that it will meet all the requirements to be on the subsidized housing inventory.
And that doesn't matter if it's rental or sold, correct?
Correct. We don't zone by ownership. We zone by type. So multifamily...
No, I just remember having to go through this for a certain program, inclusionary units, and the developer was left on his own to do it. The town didn't assist. So this is a different scenario.
Yeah. So, you know, we hear under 40B, which this is not, under 40B, how the Commonwealth calculates the affordable units that are included in the subsidized housing inventory. If it's owner occupied, then it's only those 25% of the units. And of course, we're talking about 10% here. If it is rental, it's still 25% of the units, but the town gets credit for all, 100% of the units, whether they're affordable or not. And in my opinion, I think that is the stick that the Commonwealth extends to developers to try to get them to do more rental versus homeownership, so they can have those units and they'll get credit, the town will get credit for more of those. So under those developments, as we looked at that, you know, they have to comply with the things that are in the town zoning bylaw regarding landscaping, parking, signs. This would be a provision through site plan control. It is not, it is allowed by right, which means it's not a special permit. It's essentially site plan review to get to this point. Off-street parking, multiple dwellings provide a minimum of 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit. And of course, this always gets a reaction from folks to say, "How do you make a half a unit a parking?" And the answer is, if someone's building multifamily and there's 100 units, you have to supply 150 parking spaces. It's per unit. Nobody does multifamily as one unit, so there's never one and a half parking spaces.
Correct.
So that is the net of parking spaces. And those parking spaces, once again, are designed, much as ours are presently, screening for parking, circulation for parking to make sure that people can get in and out of the site. Parking materials will be, you know, pavement, you just can't park out in a field. And as we do with site plan review, our consulting engineer will be with us to calculate the impacts of stormwater implications for internal circulation and design. The bylaw goes on to talk about that parking will be subordinate in design and location to the principal facades. So much like we have now with no parking in front of a building, the zoning is written the same way that the buildings are prominent and the parking behind them. Plantings, lighting, mechanicals. When we talk about, you know, that site issue accesses, mechanicals will be, equipment at ground level will be screened, things on a rooftop will be screened from view by architectural features. And of course, there's bicycle parking as well for the development. Those buildings will have pedestrian networks connecting them to each building into the parking lot. Sidewalks will be five foot wide, that's ADA compliant. Building facades will be treated with, you know, the same care and attention, once again, this is a bit more of a planner nerd speak. Planner's facade, building facade should be treated with the same care and attention in terms of entries, fenestration, and materials. And the buildings adjacent to a principal access drive will have pedestrian entrances and faces that access drive. Shared outdoor space is a requirement. Multifamily houses will have common outdoor space that all the residents can share. Dump trucks will be screened by combination of fences and planning, but their preference is that trash collection will be inside of a multifamily building. Stormwater management, they're required to comply with that. Design guidelines, and this is very interesting, that the Planning Board may adopt design guidelines for development in a mixed-use development and forward copy to the town clerk. When we do subdivision guidelines, when we do stormwater regulations, those are things that we do in a hearing here. They don't go to town meeting. So when we do our subdivision regulations, we change those. We do stormwater regulations, we did those at a hearing, they don't go to town meeting. My question to Judy was, if we, if it does pass and the board opts to design guidelines to develop, for, develop, design guidelines, is that something that also has to be vetted by EOHLC? Because sometimes folks will put things in to make, you know, sort of building materials that are expensive and make it more difficult to develop those sort of things. You cannot regulate what's inside of a building, but you can regulate what's on the outside of the building, but to what extent are you allowed to do that? So that's sort of an open question at this point. And as always, the Planning Board may waive by a majority vote any of the, or many of this bylaw in the interest of design flexibility and overall project quality upon finding its proposed variation is consistent with the overall purposes and objections, objectives of the mixed-use overlay district. Modifications to site plan, minor change in major changes. A major change deemed by the Planning Board constitutes a major change in the approved development because the nature of the change or the change cannot be appropriately characterized as a minor change under Part 1 above. So a minor change is 5% or less of the number of housing units in a development constitute a minor change. Now, this minor change is submitted to the Planning Board in a red line plan, and the board, as we go with minor modifications for site plans, can either say, "No, this is a minor," and it requires a full hearing for that sort of development. So I did reference here the goals and objectives to MOD. So this is at the bottom of the bylaw, so I'm going to scroll back to the top and just get back to those purposes under the zoning bylaw under Section 413-1. The purpose of the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District is to provide zoning for multifamily housing and may be amended from time to time and achieve the following purposes: encourage the production of a variety of housing sizes and types to provide access for, to new housing for people with a variety of needs, ages, households, and income levels; b, to increase the supply of housing in Carver that is permanently available to and affordable by low and moderate income households; and increase the tax base through private investment in new housing development. When people see the words "low" and "moderate income," they start to think projects and things like that. Under Massachusetts general law, affordable housing is what, 80% of the median income can afford? And as we've looked at some of these rents that are charged by affordable developments, we wonder, how does somebody get that kind of rent in Carver on any sort of circumstance versus something that's, quote, you know, affordable? Because that affordable number comes from the Boston Metropolitan Statistical Area because we're in that area when they calculate what that is. So that's the general gist of the bylaw. And happy to take any questions and still monitor my phone to see if Judy's going to join us.
Very good. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I do. I see that the handout sheet tonight was revised from the one I picked up yesterday. Could you tell me what was changed?
All the things that Amy had lined out were added, asked to be added, were included.
Can you use the microphone? I don't know if I can hear you.
Sure thing.
Mr. Shea?
Yes, I, it's right here, but, Mr. Perbanay.
We will, Donna. We're just going to discuss this and perhaps see if Judy will have chimed in. Yes.
I apologize. I had texted you when I was driving, or attempted to text you when I was driving to North Carver. And I just checked my phone, and it's still there. I didn't hit send. I'll be very late.
Not to worry, thank you.
Give me a second. Please.
Hi Judy, how are you?
I'm going to kill the feedback.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to try it again. I'm going to set this up one more time. I'll be right back with you.
Is it only set up here?
It was set up there, but I'm happy to take your advice for whatever sort of audio things you've got. So I'm going to bring her on to my laptop because...
You're on the phone, too, are you?
Nope, we are not.
Hey Judy.
A little better?
A little better.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
Maybe by turning the volume on the TV down?
Yes, yes. Okay. Please turn the TV on. I'll lock that, I'll lock that, I'll lock that.
All right. Stand in the test.
Do both TVs share? Both TVs sharing? All right, you'll try that again.
Tom, is it coming in on that one?
Be right back, be right back. Is that soundbar? Your soundbar down, okay? Okay. The D word zombie, I'm going to get you.
Hi.
That's better.
Thanks, Mr. Bay.
Excellent. Hope that the folks in the crowd can hear you. So Judy, we've just sort of gone over the basic tenets of the bylaw. And at this point, the board was asking questions.
Mr. Shea had a question.
Sure. We'll try to answer them for you.
Sure, I was given a copy of the bylaw yesterday, and it looks like there's a revised version today, and I was asking what had changed between the two.
Is the question what the differences are?
Correct. From what Town Council's review that I previously supplied to the board.
Yeah, I mean, we integrated Town Council's comments. I think that's really all we did. We didn't make any other changes. I wasn't aware of any that needed to be changed.
Integrated which? So Town Council reviewed the bylaw, and so in that striped-up version where Town Council added something or deleted something, that's what Judy did, added or deleted things that Town Council noted. Yes, and what was that? I mean, I read the one that was handed to me yesterday. I got the new one today. I just was wondering what the changes were. All right, so let's take a look at that.
I downloaded that.
Oh, I didn't get that. So in applicability, Section A, Amy Questlet said, "Notwithstanding any requirements of the zoning bylaw, including definitions, shall you know maximum number of occupants per dwelling unit created for this section."
Right.
Town Council also noted regarding Section D about inclusionary units, about land held in perpetuity, that land held in perpetuity or as long as a period, as long a period as is lawful, because of the rule, as everyone knows, about perpetuity here in the Commonwealth. Under signs, no provision of this bylaw, pardon me, not under signs, but no provision of this above bylaw shall allow a denial, no provisions of the above zoning bylaw sections shall allow a denial or unreasonable conditioning of multifamily.
the document.
Yes. There is no provision in the Planning Board to implement MOD rules and regulations. So we were just having that discussion previously, that if the town was to opt to do design guidelines, if the bylaw was passed, would those design guidelines be required to be submitted to EOHLC for their review, or is it strictly through the subdivision, or through the local permitting process here for our Planning Board hearing?
So they would have to be advisory. They can't be mandatory. I mean, that has to just be really clear, where it can adopt, you know, advisory guidelines that will not be binding on the applicant.
For instance, a mixture...
Without suggestions, you know, references or something. You can, you can do that because it's not tying the applicant's hands. This has come up in some other communities as well.
So something like a mixture of styles and colors to differentiate the buildings would be unacceptable?
You can't require it.
Okay.
You can, you can have advisory design guidelines, but they have to be advisory. They cannot be mandatory. You could consider them as part of site plan review, but you would not be able to impose conditions on the applicant to meet any of, to adopt any of the specific guidelines.
How many acres is this property?
I forget.
How many?
I don't remember. I don't remember. We have to open the model, and Tom, you probably have access to better that than we do.
I'm going to take a look while we're here. The buildable, just the buildable portion of it. Well, and do you want to talk a little bit about districts and sub-districts? Because the map we have does not contain any sub-districts.
Yeah, we didn't take that approach because we didn't get specific direction to do that. It just seemed the easiest way to do this was to establish, you know, the typical zoning parameters for a 3A district that would apply to the site.
So as it stands, what's the maximum potential build-out of this site?
Is the question whether the model allows the town to combine with the zone capacity requirement?
The question was, what is the maximum build-out of this site per the zoning?
Okay. So Lily, you would have to bring that up on the model. I think you have a pretty good summary sheet and a model for this.
All right, sorry, my apologies. I thought I unmuted myself. The modeled unit capacity is 839 units.
Excuse me?
Yes, so, so that is problematic for the board because we thought we were designing something that was going to get us to 235 units versus the 839...
Yeah, that has to be changed. That is not acceptable.
So we would need directions from the town.
We didn't sign up for anything more than 235 units, and we don't even want the 235 units respectfully. I appreciate your assistance, but where that number is coming from, that's not happening.
As I was trying to explain, we wouldn't need direction from the town, Tom, to establish those sub-districts, and we didn't have that direction, so we did not attempt to do that on our own.
Excuse me, I think we were very clear about what we were willing to do. 235 units, this thing is getting shoved down our throats. We don't even want the 235 units, and to come up with a number like that, that is, that is not acceptable.
So to the chair's point, how do we get to that, develop that sub-district that gets us to... Because we did, we did talk about and discuss a requirement for open space in regards to this property.
We would want you to provide a map indicating where you're willing to have that sub-district lie, so we can essentially take the parcel you gave us and divide it.
Okay. We, I thought we had already discussed this.
I thought we did, too.
But we didn't have directions, so we didn't do it.
Okay. It was proposed to us.
We've been very clear at all our meetings.
So that, that's just...
We would like to give you a district that more closely aligns with what you're required to do.
Oh, absolutely. So, so you will certainly verbally have that direction, but certainly in print shortly after the meeting to look at developing that district. And I'll, and what we had talked about, and I'm going to scroll to the map. We... And I'll, and what we had talked about, and I'm gonna scroll to the map, was that the, based on the fact that there are cranberry bogs on both sides of the property and one in the middle that sort of squeezes things, it appears to be, the logical choice is that line is gonna come somewhere between those two bookend cranberry bogs. So that front part of the site is gonna be the developable site, and the back part of the site would be the open space sub-district. Okay. I'm seeing nodding from the members of the board. A couple things.
I think that's fine, so just send us a map.
Okay.
And we'll work with it.
Okay.
But Lily needs to be able to create, in GIS, a shapefile, so-called, of that area, and then remodel it.
Okay. You'll have that tonight. A couple things.
That's fine, that would be great.
All right. That should be included, is there should be no development within, to protect the buffer areas of 100 feet around any wetlands. No development within 100 feet around a wetland. It's a protected area under the state and, and the town of Carver. I'm repeating what Connie is saying, just for clarity, so you can hear what his comments were. So no development around wetlands within 100 feet. I also noticed that maximum height is listed as 45 feet in residential areas. I believe our bylaw is limited to 35 feet due to the capacity of the fire department and safety and fire issues. Yeah, so the 45-feet height differs from what the current bylaw is, and I think that's largely due to the fact that in order to get that sort of development on the site, you have to have three-story buildings.
You have to have three-story buildings for multifamily.
Three-story buildings are allowed under the 35-foot height. Once we go above that, we take chances on the health and safety of the residents. So a three-foot building within a 35-foot maximum height? Right. Three stories are allowed, and I believe...
So the model isn't measuring feet, it's measuring stories.
Yeah, but our fire department measures in feet for safety aspects.
We're not gonna write a regulation that's, that doesn't make sense. So we modeled three stories, because you can't, you can't do two stories for multifamily, so...
No, I understand, and our bylaw does allow for three stories with a maximum height of 35 feet, I believe, so I think that's something we have to check on because that's what our fire department can handle.
I can't say that that would be acceptable to the state.
So, so we have options. We can obviously hear from the fire department, but if we put it at 35 feet for a three-story building, which typically a floor is about 11 feet, it's pretty difficult to get three floors into a 35-foot-high building.
That's why we didn't write it that way.
Yeah. Which, which I completely understand that it's a difficult proposition on the one hand. On the other hand, we've seen recently, I want to say two summers ago, we've seen these buildings under construction go up like matchsticks, and if our fire department feels that it can reasonably handle a building of this size and able to evacuate safely the occupants at 45 feet, that's, that's up to them, but that's the reason our bylaw is at 35 feet. No. And that, my next question is, under affordable housing, Section A, in any multifamily development resulting in a net increase of 10 or more dwelling units on any parcel or continuous parcel, so the affordable housing requirement doesn't start until 10 units are built?
That's correct.
And why isn't it 10%, which is what I thought the law allowed? So if you build 10 or more dwelling units, I think is what that says, 10% have to be inclusionary?
10%. That's correct.
Right, so if I build five, none of them have to be affordable housing? If you build five multifamily units, none will have to be affordable, but you'd have a five-unit multifamily housing development, which doesn't seem like a thing that anyone would build.
Nothing.
This is why I'm asking, is why doesn't the affordable housing kick in on, on anything above what would normally be allowed?
You want an explanation for the 10 and the 10%?
Please.
So this came up early on in the development of guidelines for the MEJ communities districts, that the Commonwealth would not accept anything higher than 10%, unless a community could show that a higher requirement would not make the project uneconomic. So there was a whole fiscal impact analysis required to do anything more than 10%. And those were often not looked at very fondly by the state. So in the absence of doing a fiscal impact study, we have no choice but to say, it's 10%, and it starts at 10, because if it's anything less than 10, it doesn't necessarily mean 10%. If you have, if you have a seven-unit project and I have to now create a unit that's affordable, I'm not at 10%. So I, I mean, we wrote this the way we know it would be approved.
Those are my questions, are my real issues, I think, I think the 10% requirement, if they're gonna do multifamily housing, should, just like we do with townhouses and various subdivisions, it's still based on fractions. I have concerns over...
We wrote what, we wrote what we knew they would accept.
Sometimes we gotta live dangerously, but more importantly, the total build-out aspect of this is, is concerning, because I know we discussed a cutoff line originally in regards to this, which might or might not have to change based on the protected areas of the wetlands, because I think that's, that's important if they're gonna do it by right, and everything should be cut and dry.
I would agree.
And that was really all I had.
I would have to say this has to be revised.
Hopefully, that's why we, open hearings typically, don't close them the first time.
Right. So we have a moving target for town meeting?
Well, I had said at the last meeting, I fully anticipated we would be continuing this till next week.
Okay.
And I also said, I think, at some level, it's conceivable there could be a planning board hearing on October 7.
Correct.
Unless the board wanted to meet sometime later on in the week, not on Tuesday night. Given that the bylaw has, and, and one of the things, and Judy can confirm this, is one of the things the Commonwealth has looked at with transit-adjacent communities, is they've, they've ruled with less of an iron fist, if I, that's actually Judy's words, but they've given a lot of latitude to transit-adjacent communities in complying with the bylaw and the things that we have to do. But still, those things that you know are a red flag, and since they're gonna kick you out, that's what your, what your professional people are here to do, whether it's me, or Judy, or somebody else that says, "Don't do that, or these are where the implications are." So I think we, while we don't like the bylaw, we, you know, we trust the process there, as to how we're gonna get something across the finish line, assuming that 50% plus one people at town meeting vote for this.
So, Tom, when we remodel this, we also can try to increase the open space percent of lot area and see if we can get the number down that way as well.
Okay.
The number has to get down to the 235, that's not open for discussion.
Yep. I'm with you.
Yeah.
235, 235 is that target number that we're looking to create a developable site for.
Understood, and it may be 235, and it may be 240, but I mean, there's a point beyond which you just can't design this model to get to a specific number, you're gonna get close. People just need to understand that, I'm not gonna lie to you.
I, I understand it completely, and I, I understand the need for a little wiggle room in regards to this. 800 is not wiggle. That's rumble room. Yeah, that's, that's on the list. So what else have we got from the board?
Any other questions? Mr. Robinson? Mr. Doherty? Listen. Well, if there are no other questions, we can open it up to the public at this time. Would anybody like to speak on this matter?
Donna Marie Boran, 27-8 South Metal Village. The only concern I have is this hearing was going to be closed tonight, is that correct?
It is not now.
It's not now?
Correct.
That we found out?
I don't think anybody ever said this hearing was...
No. No, but I was kind of hopeful that perhaps we could come to a, you know, solution and, you know, get this wrapped up for the warrant, but yeah.
Even on the simple things a couple weeks, simple things a couple weeks ago, we continued the hearing to another night to make sure people had a chance to understand what the process was.
Right.
For many for future questions, so.
No, we're not closing it, Donna.
Thank you. So I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you for the work that you put into this. I know it was really difficult to do. I'm just embarrassed that an agency would come before us and try to put forth a project of 800 housing is embarrassing, quite frankly, and thank God we have a planning board that can handle trying to maneuver through the changes that are gonna have to take place before October 7. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Donna.
Hello, Robert Belbin, 26 Gate Street. Hello, everyone. So I understand this is required, all right, just for us to get grants, bottom line, that's why we have to do it. This town runs on grants, unfortunately, to pay for some of the extras that we need in our town, okay? My comments here have to be pinpointed, that AD Makepeace has hundreds of acres in South Carver that they can develop into housing. Hundreds of acres. That could be anywhere from 300 to 400 single-family homes. And I think that's where we should be focusing this on, is down there, or in North Carver, where the water system is available for, once it gets running, if it gets running. But no matter what, I think, I got a call from a company that's interested in building up there yesterday, all right? So we have to be aware that if we put it down here, and I just want to make this clear, this is the Ferrera used car lot.
Correct.
Dealer, right?
Yes.
So people have an understanding of where the area is, the map is one thing, all right? So my comments, I'm gonna stick to my list here now. Height of the building, it's saying three stories here, which is, they're saying 45 feet, okay? Right now, we don't have a ladder truck, or what they say, an aerial truck, okay? But once we do have one of those, guess what? We can go as high as what that can, can make us to, all right? So if we didn't pay for that ladder truck, guess what? We would be limited. But once we get it here, we're not limited anymore. So people have to be aware, your wish list may have harmed us in the long run. That's number one, all right? Also, the next thing is your conservation setbacks. Thank you, Connie, because that was on my list of things to talk about, is that with this lot, you take away the setbacks of the 65-foot buffer, and then the 100-foot buffer on that, okay, that limits the property even more, all right? So I'm sure there's 839 units that they brought up, and I'm not attacking you on that, I just want you to be aware, you did what you were told to do and to satisfy, but that's, I totally agree with you guys. I mean, we want the minimum requirement is what we have to get. So that's an issue, okay? So we didn't get really an acreage, is that how much acreage is there once we take the setbacks for conservation on this property?
I think there would still be plenty to propose 235 units, but I just wanted to go back to your initial comment about AD Makepeace or in North Carver. I don't know if you've watched any of the prior meetings, but my goal, I can't speak for everyone on this board, was to make this as difficult as possible for a developer to come into this town and put up 235 units. That's why we chose that property. It wasn't just to say, here, put it in the center of town, it was to make it difficult for somebody to want to come to town and build.
Okay, if I was a lawyer, I would have just told you, you would better stop that right then and there.
I don't care what...
Just, I'm just letting you know that...
It's my opinion, that's what I am voicing my opinion on.
I understand that.
And I don't care about the state, I don't care about the law, we're checking all the boxes, and that's why we're doing this.
Okay, I understand that, but we have, we have an adult entertainment area in South Carver, and they did the same thing, all right? They tried to make it in the most difficult place to put it, there. Well, the state knows that now. They said, "All right, we're keeping an eye on this, because we know what you did with this other area." All right, so just bear, bear in mind that, that's an issue, all right? The density, that many buildings, even at 235, in the center of town, you're talking about putting lights up here, you mean, that's gonna really put a damper in this town center here about anything going on in town center here. It's gonna put a lot of pressure on the back roads that people take, too. That's an issue, all right? So I understand, you make it difficult, but the problem is, is that somebody's gonna look at this as a money-making opportunity, and they're gonna do it no matter what. And they're gonna do it because the state says that they can do it. So you have to look at it the other way, it says, "Put it someplace where it's feasible," all right, or at least partially feasible, all right? This, this I don't think is feasible, to be totally honest. The next one is the availability of water in that area, we don't know anything about the contamination, because it is a auto park. So if there's any contamination down there, and it's leaked onto the water, then that's a non-buildable lot, and there has to be a way to get water. And there is no water here in town except for this little station here.
To my point again.
All right, I understand that, but the state's gonna look at this, too, all right? It's not just me saying this, it's the state's gonna look at this, and these, they're gonna criticize it.
They don't even know that we don't have town water, though.
Yeah.
They weren't even aware. They were not aware that we don't have town water, they were not aware that we don't have town sewer. They were surprised, according to...
Well, they know it now.
Senator Duner.
They know it now.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be issues with that. Lack of a shopping center and healthcare area around, the whole idea of this is to have all these different opportunities, so people don't have to drive, they can walk to these different areas, and there is no walking to a shopping center or healthcare or whatnot. So that's another issue, too. And my final one here, and you guys are gonna love this, who do we file complaints with, all right? If this gets passed the town meeting, all right, who do we file the complaints to?
I have no idea.
Mr. Bott?
The town is obligated to create zoning, and that's it. The developer has to find water, developer has to find sewer, the developer has to find the money to clean up the site, the developer has to find the money to build the site. The town's obligation is to create zoning to create that opportunity. We're one of 175 towns that are required to do this. If 100 towns have passed this zoning already, then there are 99 other towns a developer might develop in. Is a developer gonna say, "Let me go down to this junkyard where there's no water and sewer and start building," or they're gonna go, "I'm gonna go to Weymouth because the zoning is there, and there's water and sewer, and there's all that stuff already." So we may see some development in Carver at some time in the future, but we might, well, I'm, I'm, I'm a senior citizen, I might be dead by the time it happens. Our obligation is not to make it easy for anybody, our obligation is to create zoning. The marketplace will decide where they wanna build things based upon the existing conditions and based on what it costs to build it.
Okay, so my question was, who do we file complaints with after town meeting, whether this gets approved or not approved, who do we file complaints to?
About what?
To the state.
About what?
That we're not happy with the way it was approved, or we're not happy if it wasn't approved.
Write your senator, write the AG.
Could you say that again?
Write your senator, write the AG. I mean, it's, people, you're not the first person to complain about the MBT zoning bylaw.
No, I understand that, but I just want the public to have an availability, to know where do they go to, to file a complaint, and you're saying your state legislature and the Attorney General's office. Is there anyone special that's overseeing this? Is there a certain...
I have no idea.
Attorney? Attorney or...
I have no...
Office that's taking care of this? Do you guys know?
I mean, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities is the agency that has authority to adopt gun regulations. So, that would be, you know, another place. I just want to jump in on something. Tom, when you are sending us back feedback, I just want to point out, we actually did send a map that showed sub-districts, but I don't, I think you were on vacation, and we didn't get a response. So, we may have already done this work, but you need to give us direction as to whether the way those, that sub-district was created is going to work for you.
Yeah, will do.
All right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin.
But I think, you know, I think one of the things that's challenging for towns, everybody, not just you guys, to understand is, you have this density metric, you have this own capacity number, you have area requirements, and it would be a perfect world if they all came together to say somehow, the density will be 15 units an acre, the zone capacity is 235, and, but it doesn't ever really happen, because we're dealing with a computer model. So, every time you tweak one assumption or another, it affects the bottom line, and you, you just are never going to get to 235. I, I don't want to lie to people. If we can get you to 240 or 250, I'll feel like we've succeeded.
Shoot for 240.
But that's not going to happen. We can't give you a model that's not going to get you into compliance. We can't do that, so...
Well, if you're just creating a model, and you're starting off your model at 235, and you're telling me you can get to two, you probably get to 250, then to Mr. Maitt's point, why don't you start low, put it in the computer and see what you come back with? You might end up at 235.
I do expect it'll end up around 240 if you're lucky.
We have provided a map with the town, showing the sub-districts, and we will model them if you give us a go-ahead to go with how we divided the parcel, but we don't have that right now. We did do this work.
Okay. Very good.
I think we've been very clear as to what our limitation was, and we weren't happy with that, so to see the frustration on her face right now is puzzling to me, because we were struggling with 235.
Okay.
Our frustration is we tried to get direction on the sub-district delineation, and we don't have it.
Yeah.
We did that work.
And you can place that firmly on me, you're going to be the first one to communicate with these folks.
No, Mr. Bott, I will not, because I think we were all very clear at our meetings, so...
Well, just to round out the whole communication thing, we, we first had this first meeting with Judy, we were at the police station.
Mm-hmm.
And I wasn't there, and...
We were.
I know, but that was that take, like, oh, spot me 20 minutes so we can make sure we got a recap of all those sorts of things. So, that would have helped me begin. But now, we're in this situation we're in, we've got the technology, the folks have got the technology and the familiarity with the models to get us to the point of compliance. And as Judy said, there are various parameters. It's not like you just go shopping and you say, I want to buy, want to buy something that costs $235, and it filters out everything else. I'm, I'm speaking out of turn, Judy, let me know, but you put these parameters in, and it, it turns through what it turns through. It's not, it's not a, an exact science of, you know, building them all.
Very good.
So, we've got, well, actually, hearing's still open, so is anybody else have something to say?
Absolutely. Anyone else in the public like to speak on this matter tonight?
I don't think the last person signed the sheet.
Mr. Belbin, could you sign in, please, before you go? So, it looks like we're...
Can I ask you?
Oh, very good.
Denise McFallen, 15-1, South Meadow Village. So, my understanding is that we have to give a proposal to the state of where we want to put this, but you can't put a square in a round hole. If it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. If we're saying there's no water, there's no services with the fire department, you're still giving them what you have directed them to give, the 235. And if it doesn't work, it's not the fault of this planning board, they did what they could do, protecting the town and the infrastructure that we have. So, I don't really understand the problem. It's not that we're not doing, or you're not doing your due diligence, they're doing the best they can with what we have within the town's structure. So, putting forward anything, at least you're not putting, not putting anything forward. I hope that makes sense.
It does, it does.
And thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll continue to...
All right, so I'm going to just, over my list before we...
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just think Lily wanted to clarify something for the board, she's much closer to the model than I am.
Yes, so, in my initial modeling of the open space sub-district, I think because this district is so large, it is hard to get the modeled unit capacity to 235 without substantially raising the density, allowed density, and, you know, getting the, the required density. So, there were, in our initial modeling, a number of other areas that were much closer to the 235 number. So, if the 235 is most important to the board, I would suggest either looking at those other areas or being willing to substantially increase the max allowed density, especially if the district will be split into two sub-districts. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, speaking for the board, that this is the site they like because of the aforementioned reasons that it's difficult to develop, and we will just have to look in those parameters and get us down to something much less wealthy than 800-plus units, but get us down in that 235 range, and...
And, and that's possible, Tom, but I think the thing you need to understand is that the overall district has to meet the density cap. So, if we, even if we take a sub-district and say, we're going to put all the housing here, the density, in order to support the entire parcel being at 16 units an acre, in the sub-district's going to be much higher, because you have to reach the density for the entire parcel. You see what I'm saying? So, in the sub-district, the number's going to have to be higher on the density side in order for the entire district to meet the 15 or 16 units an acre. So, people just need to understand that that's what you're going to see going the sub-district approach.
All right, and we'll see that when we see the map and that, those calculations, and come back from that.
Right.
Okay.
Right, right.
TBD on that.
Yep.
So, so, in, in my list, maximum development area, 839 units, way too many, town to establish sub-districts, no develops in the wetlands in parameters, three stories, 45-foot in height is what's called for, but could it be less? And then modeling the, the sub-districts and coming back with what, what that yield of units might be at that point.
Yeah, I mean, we've done that, so we can give that to you, I think, pretty quickly.
Okay, very good. So, I think at this point, we're probably looking at a motion to continue until the 30th?
Correct. Get a motion, just continue.
I'll make that motion to continue to the 30th.
And I'll second it.
So, Tom, since I know for a fact we cannot be there on the 30th, because we have a meeting conflict, you and I and Lily should have a meeting...
Absolutely.
Before the 30th, and make sure you're all set.
Absolutely.
That's not our typical meeting night. Are we going to be meeting in meeting room four?
Well, the good news is, it is the fifth Tuesday of the month, and most people meet on the first and thirds, and the second and fifth, so the fifth Tuesday of the month is always the best Tuesday for a meeting, because nobody meets them.
There you go.
So, we're going to continue it to September 30 at 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall, room number one.
That's correct.
Mr. Lake?
Aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Sotillo says aye.
Muriel Ann Williams says aye.
All right, thanks, guys, enjoy.
Very good. Okay, next on the agenda this evening, we have Mark Hendrickson and Shane Farrar requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 5-3 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 167 Center Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 40, Lot 11-0-R, in the residential agricultural zoning district to construct a duplex. Do we have anyone here? Come on up. If you could just both sign in. Hi there.
Good evening, Mark Hendrickson, 167 Center Street, Carver.
Shane Farrar, 167 Center Street, Carver.
Go right ahead.
So, we purchased 167 Center Street back in April. That picture is a good depiction of what it, what it is or was. We have removed the water, water logs and a lot of the wood chips. The current structure is approximately 10 to 15 feet from the road, and the driveway that they were using is on a very sharp corner. So, we've, once you go through the drawings, but we're proposing a duplex, which we understand is allowable via special permit in the town of Carver. And our lot coverage, we're allowed, we have 84,000 square feet, just about two acres. We're allowed to use 30% of that to build a structure. We're using, with the duplex, it's, it's one structure, we're using 3.9% of the lot, so that, it's an allowable use under special permit in, in the town of Carver.
So, quick question, you're not living there, are you?
No, no.
So, what's your address?
Oh, our, my home address is 466 Old Town Way in Hanover.
And that would be the appropriate, when you identify yourself, that's what we give.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to do this.
Did you receive the notice from the fire department?
No, we did not.
No, those just came in this afternoon, so... So, and I'll shoot you over a copy as well. So, comments from the fire department? proposed site design does not meet Carver's, fire department's requirements for driveways. Driveways serving two dwellings shall be 22-foot wide. So, driveway is going to have to be 22-foot wide. The Carver Fire Department requires an NFPA 13D fire sprinkler system and duplexes. Sprinkler systems shall be installed in duplexes consisting of two or more connected units, a local regulation. Those are the comments from, from the fire department had regarding the development. It looks as though the area that's being developed, the maximum site for the development, according to what you've got here, is... I'm missing that. Oh, 25,221 square feet, that's essentially the area of disturbance for the dwelling itself.
No, the dwelling is 3,300 square feet, we're allowed 25,000.
So, the area, but you, the area you're disturbing for the development itself, for the units themselves, where it has lot coverage, 30%, 25,225 square foot.
If you see at the top there, that says the zoning required by the town.
Yeah.
And then the provided, what we're actually using is the 3,300 square feet.
So, 3,300 square feet is the maximum area that's being disturbed for the site, for the units?
For the construction of the structure, yes.
Okay. So, that box, okay? Just trying to get clear on that. Thank you.
I will, I will note that, so, where's the, where's the road on this picture here? Is it to the right or to the left? To the right.
So, the roadway is right here, this is Center Street, the existing house is right here, it's going to be raised.
Okay, yeah.
And there's the driveway that's not wide enough for the fire department.
I'm, I'm not in, in favor of, over increased development, especially unless it's, the lot is large enough to otherwise come close to accommodating it. This one's only slightly larger than the required 60,000 square feet. Also, if it was to be approved by this board, I would want the closets removed from the upstairs offices. And I would, I would recommend restricting an ADU, but I don't even know if that's even possible. But this is a special permit.
So, I'm confused by that. So, we're allowed up to 30% of the 84,000 square feet?
76,000.
I, we have 84,000 on the...
I have 76,132, according to the assessors.
Okay, so, if it's 76,000, we're allowed 30% of that. We're using less than 5% if it is 76,000.
Right, but, but what's your point? I wasn't arguing over lot coverage.
What were you arguing?
I, I wasn't, I wasn't arguing anything, I was making my point that I'm, I personally am not in favor of increased development in general, unless the lot is relatively close to supporting the two. In other words, if it was around 110 out of the required 120, or even close to 100, but right now, we're looking at the requirements for one dwelling unit being at 60,000 square feet, and the lots being just slightly over 76,000 square feet. I'm just not in general in favor of increased development in regards to it. Any, not yours in particular, but any in general. And then we have the matter of, is it going to be two plus an ADU, and where does that come in? And now, all of a sudden, we're putting three on there? So, that's, that's where I'm coming from to the board. Because as we know, the primary dwelling is allowed an ADU, but this is a special permit, so I don't know if we're allowed to restrict that. But also, the, the closets in the office space concern me as they could be considered another bedroom.
I would agree.
So, if I may, I don't believe the board has the capacity to regulate anything inside of the house. The board has the capacity to issue a special permit for the use on the site, you cannot regulate the interior of a house, you cannot regulate the building materials.
Fair enough.
And if the zoning says 60,000 square feet is the minimum, and they've achieved the minimum of 60,000 square feet...
I was not arguing that. I made it very clear that this is 76,000 square feet, which is about 16,000 square feet over the minimum.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions? Does anyone else in the public have questions on this, this evening? Yes, can you please come forward?
You guys want to give up your seats and let some folks talk about development? Thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to ask questions. Do I address the board as I ask that?
No, the, the board, if you could just sign in and then...
Nicole Tully, 162 Center Street. So, I wanted to ask, we got, we got something in the mail from the trust, the gentleman that are building out the property.
Yes.
There's a storage unit, a massive storage unit at the back of the property, and most of the property is fenced off. I'm just curious, what's the intent for that property long-term? The, the use of the storage in the back end of the property that's not being developed?
Okay.
Please, for future storage...
For personal use or commercial use?
Personal.
I personally am not comfortable with this, most importantly, because I think it, that the bylaws, the zoning law... because I think that the bylaws, the zoning laws need to be enforced. I have significant concerns as this area is a residential area, and even today, that neighborhood is not enforced. There is a tree logging company operating at 164 Center Street with constant noise, smell of machinery going, coming and going, wood chips being stored, dangerous logs being stored that I've been trying to have addressed since 2019. Making any exceptions to zoning laws right now only enforces the concept that we are not going to stand by our zoning laws and has risked the integrity of this residential neighborhood. And I'm concerned with making any exceptions to that at this point is even more risky because nothing's being done to address the issues at 164 Center Street, which is a constant interruption to the residential neighbors. And then the other question I would have is, is there anything going forward that would prevent anything commercial happening in the back? Because there's nothing preventing 164 for operating a business out of the backyard. What would be done to make sure that that doesn't happen here across the street?
Well, it's a residential lot.
Right, 164 is a residential lot and a business is being run.
But we're not dealing with 164, we're only dealing with this property. So this is the matter at hand.
Right, so if it can't be enforced at 164, my concern would be that it potentially wouldn't be reinforced across the street as well.
Valid concern.
Sorry.
It's a valid concern.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Mr. Belvin.
Robert Belvin, 26th Gate Street. So I'm familiar with this lot as a selectman, I dealt with the lot across the street that she talked about. And I won't talk about that, I want to say thank you for cleaning up his work that he dumped over there. I appreciate that very much because it looks a lot better than it did. So I want to say that, thank you. I also have a question is, you can't regulate the interior of a single-family home. We're asking for a two-family here, all right, that's being put on, all right? She has concerns about the back end of the property being used for something. So you can put something in there that says that you can't run a business behind there, all right? Or not allow another roadway put up in the back so they can fill up another roadway beside one of the houses to drive up into the back area there. I, my question is, why isn't the, why aren't the houses back further on the property? That's a really dangerous curve going, when he's got trucks pulling in and out of there all the time. I've had to stop because they got the road blocked off right where they're turning around, they're going to put that driveway. That's an issue, because like I said, you get stuck there, they're trying to back it, four trailers and trucks going back there, all right, constantly. There's an issue there. So the driveway access is going to be an issue. And I think that needs to be dealt with because that's a really bad turn. And then like I said, you have him coming on, if someone tries to pull out and they're trying to go around the truck, you're looking at an accident scene right there. And you know, I've been notified of it now, so the town could be at fault for future occurrences. And hopefully the select board will get their ass in gear and take care of this guy who's running a truck.
Excuse me, I'm talking about that right now.
I'm just letting you know. Hopefully they'll take care of him, all right, and get rid of this commercial entity in a residential neighborhood.
If you could sign in, please, Mr. Belvin. Would anybody else like to speak on this matter? You can come back up if you'd like. Does anyone on the board have any further questions? As to Mr. Belvin's question, asking why you didn't set back the duplex further into the lot, is there a reason for that?
Well, we did set it back. The current house, like I say, is approximately 10 to 15, from, 10 to 15 feet from Center Street. Can I, can I come up and show you that, like, on that drawing? Because I also want to address a couple other things.
Well, you can show Mr. Bott, and then you can point it out at the screen if you'd like.
Perfect. So the current structure is right here. Center Street is right here. The layer to there is about 10 to 15 feet. I'm sorry if I'm in anyone's way. So, this is the current structure. We moved, there's a 50-foot driveway, and the house is set back about 80 feet. So we did, we're pulling, I mean, the current structure is 10 to 15 feet from the road. I also want to address the dangerous curve. So the dangerous curve is up here. And there, you know, obviously there were those logs that were coming in there for many years, even after we bought it, new logs arrived. So we did put a fence in to stop the logs from showing up. But the dangerous curve is up here. The driveway is now down about 90 feet from that dangerous curve. So we did address that, we understood there was, there was a death or an accident there. So we did push this down. And then, if allowable, the new driveway for the back barn, storage barn, is even further down on the other end of the lot. So we did address that concern. That sharp curve is up here, and the existing, where all those logs were coming in, were right there. And the first thing we do, did when we purchased the property, is remove all the logs at our own expense. And they were encroaching the street, as you can see in that other picture. That's the first thing we did. This is not the first property we've purchased. We're not trying to overdevelop. We are allowed, as you all said, up to 16,000 square feet. So we would be allowed to build a single-family home without a special permit, without a meeting, up to 16,000 square feet. We're talking about building a duplex that's 3,300.
So you have a duplex, and then you have your future storage barn?
Correct.
Do you intend on operating, operating a business out of that storage barn?
No, we do not.
But you have separate access to it?
Correct.
And the back lot is kind of, the fence goes across it and it's separated into like, so it does...
It appears that you're separating it distinctly.
To the young lady's point.
Yeah.
So if I may, it's certainly within the board's ability to approve it with conditions that says it's residential development. Any future development on-site, storage barn would be for personal use. And the building commissioner is going to be the person who's going to be in charge of, regulating those sort of things and policing them. And, you know, we've had a history of a lot of different building commissioners through town. We've got one now that we've had for three or four years. And I think by all accounts, people are quite comfortable and quite happy with what he's been doing to clean up a lot of things around the neighborhood. If you look five doors down across from the gas station, there's a lot less things that you used to be seeing in that yard because Rod's like, you can't have those things there. So, you know, what may happen in the future, what's happened in the past. To your point, we're talking about, you know, one particular lot, this one, with a developer who's looking to develop housing, which, as we've talked about, the town needs. And this is housing on a residential scale. And whether they put an ADU in the back or not, so we've talked about that before. An ADU is just like a house. It wouldn't require any permits by the board. And you can put an ADU on a lot, whether there's a single-family unit on it or a duplex on it.
Right.
The issue would be, do you have sufficient room for septic system for those things? And I venture to say, based on the size of the lot, yeah, you have plenty of room for poo.
Okay. Any questions from the board? No? Mr. Bott?
Me.
What's that? He was asking about the letter, he read the letter from the fire department.
The driveway.
Yes.
And they have a copy of the note.
If there are no further questions from the public, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right. If there are no further comments from the board, I'd like to make a motion?
To close the hearing?
Yes, we just, yes.
So we got a motion and a second?
Kevin, yes.
To vote to close the hearing?
Yes. Mr. Lake?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Shidillo says aye.
Marilyn Williams says aye.
And if there's no further conversation? A motion?
They're going to widen the driveway?
So, let's, so for purposes of discussion, I will make a motion to approve the special permit for a duplex at 167 Center Street in Carver.
Second.
For purposes of discussion, I have a lot of concerns. And, and clearly to the, the young lady's point there, it's completely separated in such a sense that I can see why she's concerned in regards to that. We're not the best at enforcing in this town if and when we ever do. The fire department has concerns. And then all of a sudden, we're looking at the potential of three dwelling units on a property that's only barely larger than what's allowed. So, the property has a history of violations. And not, not to these people here, but in general. And there's been a lot of issues in the neighborhood. I don't think it would be in the best interest of the residents or the town to approve it. I will be voting no on this.
Okay, very good. Will we have a motion? Mr. Lake?
Uh, no. Kevin Robinson says no.
Alan Shidillo says no.
Mr. Shea says no.
Marilyn Williams says no.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have Three Rickets Pond Drive LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Article 5-3 and Article 3-1, Section 290-2-2.3, Section 290-4-3.4A of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Three Rickets Pond Drive in Carver, Mass. SSIS MAP 32 Lot 1-4 in the Spring Street Innovation SSID zoning district. The project will include the construction of a second light industrial building.
Mr. Bott, I will be recusing myself from this matter?
Very well.
I'm going to hand over to Madam Vice Chair.
Good evening, my name is Eric Schumaker. I'm a professional engineer with Mackenzie Engineering Group. I'm here representing Mike Ficini and Three Rickets Pond Drive LLC. Before you is a proposed special permit for a second building located on the lot at Three Rickets Pond Drive. To this point, we're not in receipt of an engineering peer review, so I'll introduce the plans and attempt to answer any questions. I think the next step will be responding to the peer review when it's received, and we'll go from there. So I'll start with the existing conditions plan, that sheet EX1. The site's located at Three Rickets Pond Drive, or Lot 4 of the Rickets Pond definitive subdivision in Carver. It's comprised of about two acres. Sites located in the Spring Street Innovation zoning district and the Town of Carver Water Resource Protection District were bordered by State Highway Route 44 to the northwest, undeveloped woodlands to the north, and Spring Street to the south. Subdivision was originally approved by the Carver Planning Board in April of 2019, and we've been developing the individual lots. The site currently consists of a 7,400-square-foot office and warehouse building with associated parking area, loading ducts, utility connections. There's a potable well for drinking water located at the rear of the lot, septic system located behind the principal building, electric, gas, and a closed drainage system running through the site. The topography ranges, but generally slopes to the east towards Rickets Pond. The closed drainage system, catch basins and drainage manholes run down to the south to the infiltration basins that were designed for the subdivision back in 2019. We've been rerunning those calculations for each lot to ensure that we comply with the local and state regulations. The survey that you see here is a result of instrument survey performed in June of 2025. This represents the site at the time of filing. There's a bordering vegetated wetland complex located along the eastern portion of the lot, and that's associated with Rickets Pond. That was delineated by environmental consulting and restoration in 2018. And ORAD approved that limit of bordering vegetated wetlands later in July of 2018. So now I'll move on to the site layout plan, that sheet C1 in your packet. This, first of all, we're filing a special permit for a few sections. Multiple principal buildings on one lot, a warehouse and a building with less than 20,000 square feet, and any use with more than 10,000 square foot impervious in the Water Resource Protection District. And that's noted on our special permit application. This plan shows the proposed surface treatments of the site, as well as the building, the parking areas, the setbacks, the traffic circulation. The proposed development is going to extend the existing limit of pavement about 106 feet to the east towards the Rickets Pond side. We're going to provide a 4,475-foot building. 25% of that will be office, the rest will be loading bays. The building is oriented, so the loading bay will be facing the front of the site. The parking will be in the rear. So any anticipated vehicles accessing the loading bay will have a shared maneuvering aisle with the original building on the lot. We propose eight on-site parking spaces with one handicap-accessible space. And you'll see towards the top of the sheet that those parking calculations are provided based on the criteria of office and warehouse that we show. The land usage tables on the top left of the plan show the existing and proposed dimensional constraints of your zoning bylaw as applied to the site. Last thing I'm going to note on this sheet is the one-way traffic circulation. We have a 12-foot one-way aisle towards the north of the building that's joined by two-way 24-foot access drive adjacent to the parking spaces, and then another one-way to leave. We really anticipate only, you know, vehicles accessing the building and parking to use that one-way aisle, in addition to probably the trash truck. We chose the one-way versus two-way for those access aisles just to reduce the amount of pavement on the site. And, and we wanted to really cut back the disturbance from the 100-foot buffer zone to avoid Conservation Commission filings. The entire proposed limit of pavement will include a cave-caud berm to contain the stormwater and any vehicles within the site. So I'll move on now to the grading and drainage plan, that sheet C2. As with all designs, our goal in designing the drainage system was to comply with the local and state regulations and attenuate the 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm event. The stormwater management system for the original building will remain. And all we're proposing to do for this new building is add one additional catch basin. Typically, a catch basin can receive about a quarter acre of impervious surface before we have to do some sort of extra treatment for the TSS removal. So that, that was a calculation that we performed to double-check that. The grading from here, we push everything towards the catch basin and then connect to a drainage manhole at the southern end of the site. Like I mentioned before, from here, it's conveyed to the infiltration basin that accepts the eastern part of the subdivision. So we revised this drainage model accordingly and checked to ensure that we complied with the local and state regulations. Overall, it's a reduction in impervious area from the original drainage report that was filed for the subdivision. And the 100-year flood elevation of that basin does decrease when you compare it to the original subdivision filing. when you compare it to the original subdivision filing. I'll move on now to the utility plan, that Sheet C3. So this second proposed building will access existing utility infrastructure to the extent practicable. We're going to provide an additional septic tank and connect to the D-box for the septic system. That septic system was designed with extra capacity to plan a building like this down the line, so we won't have to add any additional chambers or square footage to the soil absorption system. That's included. The building will be serviced by an existing subsurface propane tank with an underground gas connection located to the south. The existing potable well to the northeast of the lot will connect a water service to our new proposed building from there. And I think that's all to note on this sheet. The last sheet I'll talk about is the landscape plan, that Sheet LA1. So this landscape plan shows some trees and shrubs that we're going to provide for the development. We're using pollinator species from UMass as our chosen species for trees and shrubs. The side yard buffer consists of white pine trees and cedar trees as well as pussywillow and endless summer hydrangea shrubs. In total, we provide three trees and six shrubs on the northern side and two trees with six shrubs on the southern side. It should be noted that this is going to be in addition to what's already provided for the development. We had an extensive landscape plan for the original building that has been constructed. The rear yard will include a six-foot-high vinyl fence with wild bike openings that grade the entirety of the 100-foot buffer zone. The wooded buffer will be maintained, and we plan to use the existing fence on-site where feasible. If we can save some money to reuse some of the posts or the paneling, that's a good condition. We plan to do that. The interior parking area consists of two eastern redbud trees, and we have one in each landscape island, and we believe we're compliant with the Carver zoning bylaw as far as the parking lot perimeter landscaping section. We created a visual screening of automobile parking areas, and since we have eight parking spaces, we're providing excess of eight feet of landscaping on all sides of our parking area as the section reads. So I think I'll stop there, and like I said, we're not in receipt of a peer review letter yet, but we can attempt to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, so does anybody in the board have any comments or questions?
Gentlemen, there should be no two-way traffic out back. If you're coming in on one way and go out the other way, keep it continuous, otherwise you're asking for problems. Are trucks going to be entering these loading bays from opposite directions, or is the one-way only in the rear?
The one-way is only in the rear. You can see towards the middle of the site there where I have the, yes, the two arrows. That's 24 feet wide, so that can support.
I think what he's talking about, Eric, is there's two arrows on the parking side where that shows that it's going both ways.
No, you're right.
The middle.
In the back, though, where you mentioned, sir, that has to be continuous. You can't just come in from one way to the other and then start doing donuts in there. I was asking whether on the other side where the loading area is, if that was back and forth, and if there was a circular pattern to that side or not.
Yeah, that's a great question. That's going to remain two-way, so we have some striping in there to kind of designate the loading area, and that's shown better on Sheet C1. We have a 24-foot-wide driving aisle in that area that's going to support two-way traffic, and then there's about 21, 22 feet for each loading bay, so in total, we're looking at about 66 feet in between the building, but with the striping, I believe we can kind of designate a driving aisle there of 24 feet.
The fence will be replaced all the way around?
Yes.
Yeah, correct. Dumpster will be bermed. I see you're moving it.
Yes, the original dumpster is being moved just to kind of flow with the limit of pavement, but it will be bermed. It's going to have a vinyl fence around it as well.
So part of my concern is that you put a grade break in the middle of the building, more or less, where it runs out back. Are there catch basins back there that connect to?
Yes, and that's the reason I did that. So there's an existing catch basin at the top there at that point of curvature, a little to the left. Yep, right there. So there's a catch basin there, and then if you mirror the site down at the bottom as well, I double-checked those catch basins. They have the capacity for the additional pavement. We're going to send there with the grade break, and...
What about behind the building?
Behind the building, we have one proposed catch basin, and that's shown on Sheet C2. So that's going to accept the extra impervious that we're proposing here.
Because, right, because half of the building you're proposing is going to drain into the one catch basin in back. Is that going to be connected to the infiltration system?
Yeah, that's connected to the infiltration basin, so it's going to accept the limit of the pavement in there. It's not going to accept the building. The building's going to have its own connection to the underground pipe that runs through the lot, and this is sufficient for one catch basin, what we're providing for the parking area.
And what if that gets blocked or clogged, and then you're going to get runoff into the wetlands?
No, it's curbed, so like any catch basin, we design it with a 2-by-2-foot rim. We provide BMPs and long-term maintenance plans to make sure it doesn't get clogged. The pipes are sized to be minimum 12-foot diameter, so it really would take a lot to clog that sort of pipe, especially with the flow that we anticipate coming from pavement.
Just to clarify, you said 12-foot diameter?
Or 12-inch, sorry, 1 foot. Thank you.
They say about that, that about the well in front of my house, too, but it clogs every week. That's why I'm raising concerns. You moving the monitoring well?
It isn't 12 feet, though, probably.
It does not have a 12-inch.
Getting late, I misspoke.
Just checking. I've done the same thing.
You're looking at moving the monitoring well?
No, we don't plan on moving the monitoring well.
All right, because it said it in there somewhere. I see you got a fueling and maintenance area?
Yes, on the erosion control plan.
That has to be bermed and slope away from the wetlands. There's no two ways about that.
Okay, understood. I can move that. It might be better in...
Just regrading it and using whatever extra dirt you get to bermit to make sure that nothing goes towards the wetland. We want to make sure there's not going to be any activity in the 100-foot protected Mr. Bott, if you could provide the board with a copy of the prior conditions in regards to this site? What's the expected traffic increase, and what's the proposed use of the building?
I can speak to that. I already have some tenants...
Mike, you have to tell them who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Ficini, Three Rickets Pond LLC. I have...
You have to give your real address. I understand that you're representing Three Rickets Pond.
14 Loring Avenue, Kingston, Mass. I'm sorry. I have currently tenants there that are new to the building in the front. Performance Auto, actually, they're now on the town's list for towing, and they're interested in two of the units that I am proposing, four of. I plan to keep one for myself, because as we continue to build in there, I'm going to need a location to keep equipment for snow removal and lawn maintenance and things like that, so I want to keep one of the units for myself, and there's four or five people that I know that are interested in the other one. Some of them already in the park, so it's... We've added a couple of new businesses to the park that are looking for expansion. Actually, one of them is Rollins HVAC, who is up in my front building, who's looking to possibly expand a little bit.
They're not doing maintenance and repair of automobiles on-site?
Performance Auto is a towing company, and all they do is use that as a staging location for their trucks as they're called out. There is no work being done. They have a location in Plymouth where they do all that.
And if I can just ask, and they will not be bringing any of their towed vehicles to the site?
None whatsoever. They have a private lot in Plymouth. I believe they're acquiring one in Carver, and they have one in Middleborough. We've not seen, they've been there for about three months now. We've not seen one car on the site.
I know this was limited to household quantities of hazardous waste in the prior?
Yes.
Yeah, and I expect that's not going to change?
No, not going to change at all.
Have you moved the snow disposal area?
I don't.
Because it's going to have to be increased based on the increase in...
Yeah, the snow is generally plowed to landscape areas, and any snow that can't fit on-site will be hauled off to a snow storage facility at the cost of the avenue.
Because I don't want to see snow storage on the right side of the new building where it slopes down to the water, because that's problematic. It starts at 146 and 1/2 feet, and then it goes down to 145, et cetera, et cetera, so even if it's bermed or not, it's problematic, so... Increase in well draw? You doubling the size of the building? Are you putting in a bigger pump?
The pump right now is, it's a miracle. It's 20 gallons a minute, so it's more than sufficient for what we currently have in the front building, and we have a separate underground storage facility that is handling the pump as well as the other, can't think of the term right now, expansion tanks, I'm sorry. So we add an expansion tank to that, and when we design the well, we're deep enough where we're getting enough water where that will satisfy both buildings. This building is only half as big as the building in the front, a little bit more than half as big, and there's four bathrooms in there.
How many employees are going to be on-site? Like if this is completed as a total, how many do you expect on-site?
Eight.
For the entirety of both buildings?
Well, there's five units in the front, so that's not included in the building in the eight, so there's... In two of the units, there are actually no one on-site during the day, and then we have one central, which is kind of an office facility. They have four employees, and so there's not very much traffic in there at all.
Okay, because I'm asking because at some point, the number of employees relates to the requirements for public well. Hours of operation?
Currently, it's eight to five.
And that's how, it's just going to be eight to five Monday through Friday, like...
Most, all of the tenants, the only variation would be if, you know, Performance needs a truck or something because of an accident on the road, they would just come and pick that up, but they're usually never at the site unless they're coming to get a vehicle.
I mean, we're much more generous with the allowance of the hours in regards to that, so that might be something you want to flesh out a little bit.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that there's no lights visible across to any residential areas.
Having been before you many times before, we're doing, everything's going to be on sensors.
Excellent, and I look forward to hear from Fussin O'Neil in regards to this. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is open to the public. If there's anybody out there that would like to add to this conversation, please come up to the front. Anybody from the audience want to come up? No? Okay, so...
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Continue.
I continue the public hearing.
Okay, due to her recusal, I am designating Mr. Maynard as a voting member on this permit.
So we have to...
So I guess my question is, do we really want to close the public hearing? Because we're going to continue this, we're going to hear from Fussin O'Neil. I would likely say, just leave the public hearing open just in case something that Fussin O'Neil has to say invokes some questions from the public.
So I will second Mr. Robinson's motion to continue the public hearing on Three Rickets Pond Drive requesting a special permit and site plan review to September 30th...
Well, that's, a couple of questions about that. So I talked to Andy today, they've got a draft pretty much put together. We've got right now a tentative meeting scheduled for the 30th, and our next meeting after that is October 14th. There's not a whole lot, you guys are changing on this, but I guess my question is, do you really, 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 really need to be here on the 30th?
It sounds like you have your hands full.
No, I don't want to give that impression.
We're happy to go to the 14th. That would be fine.
That gives you guys a chance to look at the memo, sort out anything that's in there, and then come back on the 14th.
That's fine with us. Yeah, there's no emergency.
You're a very good reader of human people.
So I will make my motion to continue the hearing to the 14th of October.
Fabulous.
And I will second that to be held at Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room Number 1, 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I make a vote on that?
Maynard votes aye.
Ursula votes aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
And Alan Sidillo says aye.
I'm a aye for the 14th. Thank you, gentlemen.
You, too.
Last on the agenda this evening, we have the application of Haley Sheines requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 290 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 74 Rochester Road, Carver, Mass. SSIS Map 92 Lot 7-0 to operate a doggy daycare in the lower level of the home in a residential agricultural zoning district. Hi there, good evening.
How are you?
Good. Did you sign in?
Oh, I didn't.
We didn't arrange a sidewalk for that, just...
Are you talking about the previous?
Yeah, yeah. I had it written down. I forgot about it. I should have brought it up, but...
Do you think it's necessary where we already did the sidewalk previously?
With the new, is there a new building there? Has the site changed? So, but it's something we can discuss at the next meeting.
Sorry.
No, no, it's my fault, because, you know, keep things moving, because they got a week, three weeks as it is.
So without stepping on Haley's time, we'll come back to that site visit?
Yes, okay, very good. Go ahead, I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay. So I have been running my dog daycare and boarding business, Haley's Happy Wags, out of my current residential address, 9 Omni Farm Road in Carver. I was given a special permit for that, spent about two years now, and business is going well. My ultimate goal was to save up for a house of my own so I could run it out of my own home, because I've been doing it out of the lower level of my parents' home, and that dream came true, and I purchased...
Congratulations.
Thank you. 74 Rochester Road in Carver seemed like a really good fit for my business, just for relocation, not necessarily an expansion, just somewhere where I can call my own, and it would be... And it would be mainly run out of the lower level of the house in the basement, which is currently being finished. Um, it's half finished, being, the other half's being finished. Um, and outside, obviously, as much as we can be, um, the six-foot chain link fence has been installed with tension wire on the bottom, um, with a couple of different access points with gates, and there's privacy vinyl fencing in the front. Um, and there will be like privacy wind screenings put on the fence as well, just for more privacy. Um, and it'll be ran kind of out of the whole house, but mainly the basement, um, just because it's daycare during the day, Monday through Friday, seven to six, usually only till five-thirty. Um, occasionally I'll have an overnight guest, which is only dogs that come to me on a weekly basis are allowed to come stay overnight with me. I'm very strict about who I allow into my pack because it is in my house. Um, and that would be the only overnight stays. And in that case, a dog would like come upstairs and hang out with me. But, um, everything's just staying the same with my business. It's just relocation.
Relocation. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I do. Congratulations. You've done great since last time. Really want to see this succeed, uh, but I'm, I'm sure we all want to see where you're moving to and whether it's sufficient, whether it's set up, uh, how are you going to create care for and, uh, control the dogs. I see you have, uh, a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot enclosure in the backyard, which is what, roughly about the same size as your previous one?
Yeah, just about.
Yes.
Maybe a little bigger, but, um, it would probably be divided into, just as the other one, my current ones.
And you're going to have sufficient enough space for various people to come in and out and be able to get in and out of your driveway at the same time and park their cars and...
Yep, so there's actually two entrances to the driveway and it's quite set back so you can actually pull in and around through the driveway. Um, the other day I had like the fencing company's box truck and my brother's landscaping truck and a van and my car and it's still like twenty-one to turn around, so, um, plenty of room.
These are things you just got to check on.
Yep.
That, I, 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 I don't have any more questions. I would like to see, to make sure that it's healthy, good, and sufficient for dogs. But, uh, this young lady came in front of us two years ago with a plan and it seems like she's done very well with herself. And, uh, as far as I know, there have been no concerns or complaints or issues, and she had a lot of people speak very highly about her.
Very nice.
Proud of you.
Very good. Uh, any, anyone else on the board have something to say?
Have you been provided with the letter from the fire department?
I have not.
Likely not. Like I said, they should have, pretty much should have.
Okay. Would anyone like to come forward in the public and speak on this matter?
Yeah, I will. I'm her neighbor.
Okay.
Do I get on there?
I'm right next to you.
Hi. Hannah Anderson, seventy Rochester Road. And, um, I'm very happy and proud of you. That's awesome.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Um, I'm not against this at all. I just have just a couple of questions. I saw the fence that you put in. And, um, I, yeah, because we're right above, we're right next to you.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, making sure the fence is sufficient enough. Um, you answered about the hours. My husband had a question about, like, the dog waste. What will you do with it? With the soil, you know, next to us and...
I'm glad you asked.
Okay, good.
So we're going to make a list of questions and you're going to come back up and answer.
Oh, okay, sorry.
See, we, we have an explanation for it.
Okay, good.
You don't have to.
All right, that was my husband's question. Um, and my other one was like the boarding, where you have them overnight? Because my bedroom butts right up against yours and I love dogs. I have a dog. Um, I just didn't know if you'd have them overnight, like how many will you have at a time? And the waste. That was our, my main question, me and my husband's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you, um...
So our questions were screening, dog waste, and boarding.
So the dog waste, um, the grass is all currently being dug up right now. Um, and it's going to be drainage rock and then astroturf is going to be put on top. Um, and with it being a synthetic surface like that, every single time a dog goes number one or number two, um, we'll start with the number two, I always have like fifty poop bags in my pocket and I am a maniac about that stuff.
I do too.
Cleaning it up. I am like crazy because I don't want to step in it. I don't want anyone else stepping in it. Um, so immediately I pick it up with the poop bag and I throw it in like a littered trash bin. And, um, I spray it with either Rescue Solution or Kennel Salt Solution, which is both veterinary-grade cleaners that I dilute. Um, immediately I spot, spray it, and then I'll like just hose that down. Um, same thing with urine, just wash that down with the Kennel Salt or Rescue, which are both biodegradable, safe. Um, and bi-weekly or weekly I'll do like a wizy wash, which is an attachment you hook up to the hose. And also very eco-friendly, um, that will sanitize the yard as well, kills anything up to parvo, helps a lot with the smell. Um, but I am a clean freak, so...
I get it.
And I would be happy to have you come walk through when everything's ready to go and come take a look.
Yeah, I love to.
Um, and for boarding, boarders, um, are only reg- regular daycare dogs with me. So every single dog that comes with me has a full contract they have to fill out and at the end of it, they have to sign something saying that they understand they're required to bring their dog at least once a week. Um, sometimes, I get it, you have to miss a week here and there. That's just to keep everyone comfortable with me, um, so I can get to know their personalities very well to, um, decide if they're going to be a good boarding guest with me. Because I, I won't take a dog that's obnoxious or...
Yeah, I know.
I just can't deal with that.
Me neither.
Um, and so all dogs are carefully, you know, watched and get to know them a lot before I have them come for an overnight. Um, and as I said, it's usually only like maybe one dog on the weekend or, um, I think the most I've had for boarders was three dogs, which two of them, there were a pair of siblings that come together and the other one was just like another dog from another family. Um, but they're just treated as my own dogs and they, they blend right in as my own. I have two of my own, two small little dogs, Abby and Wesley. So they blend right in with them and, um, yeah, just like...
Very good.
Both my own dogs, really. My client, it's, they've all become family. Really, at the end of the day, it's just blends well.
That's nice. I'm glad to hear that.
Um, what limits did we put on, uh, your dogs? Like how many can you have at any one time?
I believe it was the hobby, so it was no more than ten, I believe it was.
That's all right. Um, it, I'm sure Mr. Bott will provide us with the, the previous decision.
Yeah, I believe that's what it was.
And your hours will, will probably, you know, we'll look into everything again. But, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a question on the artificial turf, the aspect you mentioned. Is that, uh, is there a particular spec for that? Is that something that's specific to animal care or something? Or is it the same thing I'd buy if I wanted to build a baseball bat?
Um, you could, sorry, ask that again, I'm sorry.
I, you mentioned astroturf.
Yeah.
Artificial turf. And I wondered, there's different kinds of that. I, I never knew there's many kinds to like kids that have school footballs and so on. I- is there a specific type or spec you use, or something you, you use? Or is it just a standard garden variety, you know, and, and I guess the second part would be, are there any special recommendations of the manufacturer on, on hazardous materials, uh, care and use, runoff, things like that? And, and that you're aware of on that?
So the turf that I get has special drainage in it, drainage holes. Um, it's for pets, the turf itself. I actually get it on Amazon. I get like big, huge pieces of it shipped, um, and it has very good drainage. You can see if you like run water over it.
So it's special astroturf for pets? Why I asked.
Yeah, yeah. There's astroturf for everything.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's great.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Shea?
Only one I had was, so no more than three dogs, um, would stay over?
Just about, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's considered busy for me, for boarding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just want to, for your, for the sake of your neighbor.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yes.
I love dogs, but yes, I guess. Thank you.
Mr. Shea, did you say you wanted to do a visit?
Well, she moved into a new place. It's a residential area. It's half the size of her previous place. So we should inspect the, uh, kennel area and make sure it's sufficient for life and safety of the pets and, and Haley here. So I, I think it would be appropriate, um, plus, you know, the parking and check out the neighbors and everything.
All right. Mr. Bott, do you have any suggestions on a site visit?
Well, that's sort of up to the board and, and Haley.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the board's pleasure? What's the board's availability? What's Haley's availability? Is there a particular, uh, because when we visited you at, in Island Lane, there weren't dogs hanging out.
Yeah.
You weren't a, a dog wrangler at that time, so you probably had a bit more flexibility with your schedule. So I want to make sure, are your schedule won't be impinged upon by the board coming for a visit?
Yeah, I mean, I can make it work. There's certain days that are less busy, but, um, I've got a great helper, who's my mom. So she helps with the dogs a lot. So if need be, that can, I can work that out.
And I hope you're paying her a sustainable wage.
Oh, yes.
Very good.
So what's the board's pleasure for a site visit and let's see if those days work better, well-framed?
Do you, you said that there are days that are better than others. Is there a particular day?
Um, maybe like a Monday or Wednesday, but like I said, I can, I don't want to be a pain.
Okay.
Wednesdays are good for me.
Wednesdays are good for you?
Pardon?
Ellen said that Wednesdays are good for her.
Wednesday's great.
Yeah.
I was thinking like five o'clock maybe, or even, I'm available earlier, but I don't know who else is, so.
Okay, all right. Um, are we...
I can do a Wednesday at five.
Wednesday. I can't, um, I can't do tomorrow, so...
How can we go next week?
Meet next Tuesday, right?
Oh, geez.
Yeah.
We don't want to hold her up anymore.
No, we don't. I can, I can't do tomorrow at all.
I mean, it could, it doesn't have to be a Monday or Wednesday.
Okay.
Thursday?
I'm available Thursday. Anyone available Thursday?
We have CPC, but yeah, but done before that, I guess.
Right, that's not until seven, so, yeah, maybe around...
It's Thursday, two-day tense.
The twenty-fifth is September.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that, actually.
Morning or evening or...
Uh, Mr. Maynard, do you have a preference on the time?
Actually, I'm, I work at home and that will be free, so...
Okay. Very good.
I can make any, any time.
Anytime, Mr. Robinson?
Thursday, two days from now?
Yes.
Um, after four-thirty for me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm wildly available, so...
All right. Do we want to do four-thirty on Thursday?
Perfect.
Does that work?
Yeah.
So Thursday, nine-twenty-five, four-thirty P M. Site visit to seventy-four Rochester Road.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Yes.
Thank you. I tried to say that, but seventy-four Rochester Road. It's a lovely spot. I won't back today.
Very good. And do we have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue the public hearing of Ha- Haley Shainis, I'm sorry.
Shainis.
Shainis.
That's okay.
For a special permit...
Sister Jake, right?
Yep.
At seventy-four Rochester Road, Carver, for, uh, doggy daycare till, um, September thirtieth, twenty, twenty-five, seven P M., Carver Town Hall, Room One.
Do we have a second?
I'll make second.
Mr. Lee?
Aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye. Very good. See you in a couple of days.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Good night, thank you. Mr. Bott, do you have anything? The only other thing that I would like to state is remind everyone about the town meeting as Mr. Shea did last week.
Yes, so we do...
On the seventh.
Yes, we have a special town meeting coming up on October seventh and as the board decided tonight, we will be meeting again in a week on September thirtieth uh, for, uh, continued discussion about the M B T zoning bylaw and, uh, seventy-four Rochester Road.
Yes.
And, and may come in, let me get at to the agenda as well.
Very good.
So I do want to talk a little bit about the November schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Because in November, we have Veterans Day on our regular meeting date. Uh, so we won't be meeting that day because the building is closed.
Okay.
So we may look at adjusting our schedule for November. Uh, the other date is November twenty-fifth, which is the week of Thanksgiving, but no one's baking on Tuesday before, um, Thanksgiving.
Not May.
No. Uh, so, so like I said, we may look at, you know, pushing that, the November dates to perhaps, uh, the week before, November fourth, maybe.
Okay.
It, it sort of depends on what comes in, application-wise. I try to manage things so we don't get things stacked up like cordwood. But just want to put folks on record that, you know, our schedule's going to change for, uh, the fourteenth. So our people's, uh, general availability in November, and I know that's a long way away, for, uh, those alternate Tuesdays, uh, the fourth or the eighteenth, if necessary.
Does not matter to me. Am I available at either of those dates?
Then I don't mind meeting on the twelfth either.
Yeah, obviously the board can meet, uh, Wednesday after, but, um...
But, uh, I think we should...
We typically try to stay in our, in our lane on Tuesdays because people got lives.
Think we should see how things go and, but I'm open for it, but, you know, let's see how things are going.
Okay.
So eleven-four and eleven-eighteen are potential, uh, planned meeting dates for, uh, November.
Very good.
All right. And, uh, mentioning holidays, uh, today is Rosh Hashanah, or actually, it started yesterday. Um, as, as you may know, uh, it is a high holy day in the Jewish calendar. It's the Jewish New Year. It is fifty-seven eighty-six on the calendar. And it begins the, the days of Oz. It culminate ten days after with Yom Kippur, a day of atonement, a high holy day also in the Jewish community. And so, uh, while we recognize holidays that, on the calendar, not everybody recognizes all the calendar dates. So, uh, I know there are folks in the community who celebrate, so I just want to make sure that we recognize the fact that, uh, it's the Jewish New Year.
I'll second that.
Sure, in Ohio.
So that's what I've got.
Very good. And did you need to discuss something about, uh, site visit?
Oh, yes, I, I, I...
Did you want me to excuse myself on that?
I, no, I texted an applicant. Uh, but I haven't heard back from him.
Okay.
So, uh, based on, we are going to see Haley on the thirtieth?
Twenty-fifth, I thought.
We're visiting...
Thank you. That's, the meeting is the thirtieth.
Yes.
A site visit on nine-twenty-five?
Mm-hmm.
So that'll be my first question. Uh, are they available, uh, for a site visit on nine-twenty-five and would they have their site staked at that point?
Okay.
Having been to this before, they're, seem fairly competent about how they do things. They're likely, the corners are staked right now, but we'll reach out to them.
Okay.
And make sure that's possible. So does the board feel as though they could do, uh, two site visits in two different parts of town on that night?
I don't, I don't have the time on Thursday. Um, plus we're not going to see them for three more weeks. It gives us a, a lot of opportunity.
So when we come back on the thirtieth, I'll have some dates we've talked about with them.
Perfect.
And we'll, we'll set that up at that point.
Very good.
I will be out of town, but from the second, the second to the sixth, so...
So you are out of town October second through the sixth?
Yeah. I'll be home on the seventh. I'll be, I mean...
No Maynard, October two through October six.
As long as I'm holding up the seventh, sixth, and seventh. The town meeting is, what time does that start? Six o'clock?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
And the board is always posted prior to town meeting, that we will have our typical meeting room in case there's any other issues that the board needs to address, uh, for town meeting. But that's months away at this point, it seems like, except it's hours away.
Yes.
So what we, yeah, I've had discussions, but yeah, the board's always posted for, uh, the seventh. I, I, I certainly hope we are not having a hearing, uh, on the bylaw on the seventh. Uh, but if we did, the board may have to convene, you know, early, early in the afternoon for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So stay tuned.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
I would think that if, uh, if the numbers are... I, we can get copies of it when she produces, but that's, that's perfect. That's all I need to ask.
But as I pointed out, you know, if... But as you pointed out, you know, it's, it's a, it's a computer model. It's modeling and it's not exacting as folks would hope to be.
Mm-hmm. Understood.
Yep. But Judy will be talking about that in the morning, because she'll be in stuff for me tonight after we go, after you guys head out.
Very good. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye. Thank you. Good evening.